Okay, I guess we can get started.
All right, so Craig, you know, want to offer to come in and talk to us?
I'm here.
They basically have questions about the grant, you know, details of the grant.
You want details of the grant?
Details, yeah, well, they can ask the questions on this.
Yeah, I mean, I submitted, actually, you had the grant application, scope of work, twice, once I gave it to you guys here, and then once the summit meeting was in the back of your sheet. So, if there's questions about the scope of work, I'll go with it.
Well, I have a question for you. How it started was, the way the grant was written, it said, basically, all the money was going to go towards First Ward, the way I read it, and then no one could answer the question that night if that's the way it was, because the grant specifies the First Ward playground.
Yeah, what I asked for is, I need, First Ward's going to get probably around $92,000 scope of work. Rest of the work will be down in Legion Keener Memorial Drive, new playground at Memorial Drive, tennis courts, stand volleyball courts, parts of the walking path, and then the parking lot.
Okay, now, how are we going to do, go about this with our, with the $180,000 the city's putting in? Because I know on certain things, we need three bids over a certain amount of money. I don't know what that threshold is.
Yeah, should we, I mean, you can either, either, um, certain levels, well, we can go over it, but certain levels are phone bids, certain levels are written bids.
Yeah, if we're, if we're accepted by DCNR, there is a good process that I have to follow, okay?
Yeah, we can coordinate that, too.
I have, well, is, is the money that the city's giving you, consider, are you considering that the match to the DCNR grant?
Correct, that's one of the letters that Wayne wrote for me.
So, if the DCNR rules are different than the city rules, that because we're getting, because we're, doesn't matter?
No, we're following staples, which is their rules.
Which would be your rules, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but the state every year comes out with thresholds.
So, it'd be the same rules?
Yeah, correct.
Now, one more question, and you kind of know where I stand on this with the paving of the parking lot. I, I myself do not want to see city money being spent for paving of the parking lot. If you want to use other parts of the grant for that, I have no problem with that. But, just so you know, and you know that's from before, that's where I stand on.
Yeah, and I understand some of that, but that parking lot is, you know, again, that property will be leased to the Parks Department, so overseen by the Parks Department, with all the special events down there, it needs it, and to be honest with you, that's one of the things that definitely needs to be done to improve the park. I don't know if people will venture out, if they've ever been to Ledge Field, their parking lot just got redone, and it makes a world of difference when you're pulling down there. You feel like you're going to a quality park. I mean, they redid their signs and restriked it, and before, just like Legion Keener, you have to do all this, there's, it's not ADA accessible, lines need to be repainted on there. When you think about the Fourth of July concerts in the park, just all our facility rentals down there, Little League uses it, even overflow from stadium parking lot for school events, it really gets used, so, that's my standpoint.
Do you remember, or do you, do you have a bid for that?
Yeah, we had, we had a few bids, and it looks like that's going to come in, again, roughly about $75,000.
Out of a total grant of?
Out of $360,000.
Provided we get the DCNR grant.
Correct, yes, provided.
And you'll know that when?
Uh, that would be, I believe, October.
That's what I thought.
And then work begin early spring of 19.
Your bid on that pavement on that about $75,000, is that modified binder or is that binder end top?
Uh, I don't have that with me. I, I know that there's a top they're putting on there, so it's just not going to be like what it's down there now. They're going to put a couple inches of black top on.
Well, yeah, they have to, specs, specs, we're going to go three inches of binder.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's different, I, I don't have it with me, but I know there's different from actually pulling in by Little League and then the circle around.
Yeah, part of that's paved down there, you go in, what, 50, 75 yards or whatnot, part of that's paved, and it goes off just in a old tarred chip, which was number two tarred chip.
Right, so that whole thing will be paved.
Now, who would be responsible in the wintertime for that?
That would be us.
All right, I'm going to ask you a weird question now, because something sticks in the back of my mind.
Okay.
At some point, when we, wasn't there some, I thought I remember somebody saying that because we were putting, when we put lights down there?
Yeah, I checked with, uh, Chuck Mason, yeah, um, Bruce Jones said something at one of our board meetings.
Yeah.
I checked with, I checked with Chuck, and that's, that was a long, long time ago, that doesn't.
It doesn't have any bearing on it?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Craig?
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
All right, next on the hit parade is authorize Gibson Thomas to advertise the bids for the Honk Mint program. We do this every year, we need to have council authorize, you know, us to have Gibson Thomas to the bid. On the next, is the authorize the use of CDPG money to demolish a house on 14 East Madison Street. What we're doing is, a little different than a lot of communities have done in the past, but I think they may have done, may have done it here in the past, too, taking CDPG money, and because of those restrictions on, you can only pave certain streets with CDPG money, we're going to look at this house, if you go in, we have concerns about kids going in there.
Is that the one where the guy died?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Sit next to, next to, yeah, okay, I know where it is.
Yeah, um, we were in there and boarding it up, and the, you can see through the second floor to the first ward, and if you're up there, you can see through the roof, so, the house is structurally unsafe, so.
And the owners are deceased, and there's the?
The owners are deceased, and the sons who do not have ownership don't want it.
So, who has ownership, Jack?
Well, the ownership would be in the unopened estate. I'm actually trying to work with the county solicitor office to figure out an appropriate way to provide the requisite notices. Generally, what you would do is open up an estate in the name of the decedent, and then through the estate, go through the demolition process, and then we would lien the property, sell it, while having to recuperate our funds. But I have calls out to the county solicitor to see exactly how they want to handle it, because, you know, they're on the hook as well.
Yeah.
Assuming that the property can be demolished, where does the ownership of the property then go? Stay with the heirs?
You have to stay with the estate, yeah, I mean.
I guess I'm just concerned, are we going to run into a situation where here sits a property and nobody wants to pay taxes, even after the building?
Yeah, you're not going to pay taxes now, I mean, you're right, and what we've done in the past is, if it's a house, they consider it unsafe. Say it's leaning, it's going to fall on somebody's house, we've taken it down, and, yeah, that property is going to sit until they sell the estate. The only problem is, you know, if the property is without the house, it may be easier to sell that estate, you know?
Well, the estate hasn't even been opened. They haven't filed for letters or anything, and it's been almost three years.
We know that they are.
Yeah, we've actually notified the children of the gentleman that passed away, and they don't, aren't interested in, in the house.
Would they, would they, like, sign it over to the land bank or something like that, or would they, I mean, you know, donate it to the city, and then we could sell it? I mean, is there something that we could?
We've tried, I mean, it is on here, which is a similar thing, but we've tried to go that route, we talked to April about the land bank, and it didn't seem like it's going anywhere. I think that there may be some outstanding liens, but they may be federal liens, from what I know, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to speak with the county solicitor office and see exactly how they would like to proceed, because, like I said, a lot of times, when you have a situation like this, you open up the estate, like the city would open up the estate, we would have an administrator appointed, we would, you know, have the property demolished, and then we would put it up for sale, and recoup our funds, and close the estate.
Okay, all right, well, more to comment after you talk of this.
As far as the funds goes, you know, most of the CDPG money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next is a resolution authorizing the, Police Department wants to go after a DUI grant, actually, it's for bulletproof vests, I've copied, it's in the packet there for you. We're going to be asking the council to, you know, approve the going after this resolution, or after this grant, I mean.
Okay.
Number five is the Sheets request.
Sure, as Rosie had brought up during the last meeting, Legal Council for Sheets made an application to the city to have a liquor license from Unity Township transferred to the city of Latrobe. It was a liquor license connected with a pizza hut along Route 30 outside of the West Memorial Mall. They want to, they purchased, they're, they're under some sort of agreement to purchase that liquor license, and they want to have it transferred from Unity Township to the city, and in particular, be used at the current Sheets location by Route 30.
I mean, 981, two, 982.
982, okay.
They're on Route 30 somewhere.
We know where you're at.
Under the state law, the liquor code, in order to have this go forward, they have to, you know, make an application to the city, we have to hold a public hearing, and then we have a period of time to, you know, approve or disapprove of the application. Given the timing of when it came in, I believe we have 45 days from the date of application, really, the way that we have to have it is have a, you know, the hearing at 6:30 on the ninth, and then during that meeting, we'll address the resolution.
Um, it's, and I don't remember, or even says that now, but, so, at the Sheets, are they just cash and carry, or are they?
It's going to be onsite beer and offsite beer and wine, so you can take six packs or bottles of wine with you, leave, but if you're going to consume onsite, it's just going to be beer.
Okay.
And they're remodeling it, so it's going to have a restaurant with at least 30 patrons.
I wonder where they're going to put all that?
I know, the M. I. talked about, it's mostly much the seating for the 30s, that we're, they have to show us where the parking lot's going to be. They need, for 30 people, they need 15 malls.
Wayne's through, yeah? Are you through, Wayne?
Yeah.
I just would like to express my displeasure with that application.
Jim, can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'd like to say that I'm very displeased that we would accept that application. I know the problems that we used to have at the sandwich, when we basically were their bouncers all weekend long. You had drunks coming in and out, sticking their hands in the salad bar, and if they have a sit-down dinner type area, I know we're going to have problems. And I just would like council to consider those factors when you decide on that, or discuss it further.
Jimmy, the last one we did, like this, was, I think, Foxes, over by the shop and save.
This is, this is going to be a lot bigger than Foxes, it's been a whole 30s.
What's Foxes?
But I guess my question is, have you had any major problems with Foxes?
But they're open 24 hours, aren't they?
That's not a, Sheets is a hub, I mean, they go until, the only downtime Sheets has has is between 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning, and then it picks right up at 5:00 again, and it goes strong all night long. And weekends were horrendous, especially when, when college is in session, it's, it's just a rough, it's going to be a rough.
I wonder, I wonder how they handle this at other places, because I would imagine, like, the Eltona, the Sheets, if they have an Eltona, which is their home, I know that's a.
Well, they have it at IUP also.
Yeah.
They have this in Murraysville, the new Sheets, they're just building.
I'm wondering if we can, if we would grant it to impose any limits on the hours? I don't know.
I don't, I think we would be preempted by state law.
Probably.
They still have to go by state law.
Yeah, but they may allow.
What is the state law, 2:00, though, isn't it? Can they sell us?
Yeah, all the time. 2:00 for onsite consumption sales. This is just author, this is just approving the transfer, you know, so this is just part of the long process that Sheets will have to go to to get the license transferred here, and ultimately, to open the establishment. Sheets, as part of that process, the city has an opportunity to, you know, approve or deny the request, and that will be taken into consideration by the state when they make their decision, but this is just a small part of the overall process. The state will do its due diligence as well, in making sure that it complies with the liquor code.
So, they, would they be prone to override us if we, if we were to say no?
We could, I mean, they could.
I, when I first read that article, and when Jimmy brought up sandwich, there were a couple of us, and we all said the same thing, uh-oh, here comes the old sandwich shlood back again. We all know what that was like back in the days. That was just Friday, Saturday night, Sunday night, fight night, drunks, like Jimmy said, it was out of control, that's why it ended up shutting down. Something really needs to look harder.
Yeah, I just think it really should be looked at very well.
I agree with you on that, Jimmy.
I'm, you know, right now, I'm not for or against, but it's something that is happening all over the place, not just in Sheets, it's happening Giant Eagle, you know, how do, how do all these places deal with it?
Well, I don't think that two dozen bikers pull into Giant Eagle at 2:00 in the morning on a Friday night on their way through, like they do at Sheets's. I mean, it just doesn't happen. I mean, it's, it's, if you can consider, you know, them having their own security there or, or something like that, but for two, two officers to be on duty on a midnight shift and, you know, that nonsense going on out there, it just is, it's not a good idea.
Do we have a right to dictate that they have security?
I have no idea, it would be.
I'm not aware of any, that authorizes us to do that.
Like Zach said, this is only the beginning of it, but my feeling is, if you make a determination early enough, then you don't have to go through the drawn-out procedure, but it's just something to consider. Like I said, I'm not, I'm just telling you my point from, from law enforcement, and what problems that we had before, and like Stuffy said, it's just shades of the sandwich.
Yeah, the only, if, the only difference I can see is that Sheet seems to be a much more responsible business than the one-off sandwich salon. I would think that they would.
Weren't they the same, same entity?
I don't think so.
I think so.
I think the question was asked, what about other Sheets? And they having similar problems?
I live in Murraysville, and I'm involved in the government there, we, they just built a new Sheets, it's huge, like 9,000 square feet, everything. I haven't been made aware of any new problems created by it. The way that I often look at it is, if you, if you go on the Liquor Control Board's website, and you search for liquor licenses, and you can search by municipality, you'd be absolutely stunned to see how many liquor licenses are already issued in Latrobe. I was absolutely shocked, like, hundreds. So, there, it's, it's just, you know, another, you know, another, another place where they can go, I guess.
Did all of those go through council approval at those times?
Now, this one is only before you guys, because it's an intermunicipal transfer. If, for some reason, this fails, they'll probably just buy a different one inside the city and move it over there.
That's what I'm wondering, why don't they just do, why?
They probably got a better deal on the one, and, you know, the, the ones in, in Latrobe might sell for more money than the ones in Unity Township.
Because of the cost of transferring?
Yeah.
The legal cost of transferring. Okay.
All right, next is a resolution authorizing application for the DUI driving grant, we do this every year, impaired driving grant, again, via for council to approve the resolution for it. Next is the review of the First Ward lease.
I prepared a lease agreement, which I handed out a copy to everyone, I don't expect that you read it, and I don't expect that we would have an in-depth conversation regarding it today, but I just wanted to let you know that I did prepare a draft, I circulated it for everyone's review in due course. You know, if we want it on the agenda for the April meeting, you know, it can be, you can, you know, provide we with minor tweaks, but it's somewhat of a standard commercial lease agreement. It provides that they would, you know, that Parks and Rec would be responsible for, you know, the operation of the playground, that they would be responsible for insuring it, and it provides the limits of coverage, which are pretty standard in the commercial realm, a million dollars per occurrence, 2 million in aggregate. It's a 25-year lease, as requested by Parks and Rec, and includes a 25-year extension, which can make it for a total of 50 years. To the extent there would be any utilities on the property, it would be the responsibility of the lessie. We put in here that, I know that there were concerns by Mr. Forge and maybe others regarding ongoing functions, it's on page four, section seven at the top of page four. Lessie agrees to provide the lessor, its departments and divisions, including without limitation the city of Latrobe Fire Department and Police Department, with reasonable access to conduct activities that said organizations have historically held at the demise premises, and that the lessie will provide lessor with reasonable access for all future events to be held at the demise premises upon an appropriate and timely request by lessor, their successors, agents, and assigns, so that provides for that in the future. It is the complete use of the demise premises, but it does not include timber, mineral rights, oil, gas, things of that nature, that would, you know, stay with the lessor being the city. This allows them to make alteration, you know, capital improvements, which would be what the goal is in any event, provides the standard clauses for condemnation, fire damage, default by the lessie. And that's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the lease agreement that we prepared.
Zach, I did read it, so, I mean, if we're going to intend to put this on the agenda, I do have some concerns.
Okay.
To raise the seat, if we're not.
I, I think we should put it on the agenda, I mean, it's written, I've read it, I don't know, I mean, we have time to still read it, if we haven't had the chance, I think it came over a day in the U.S.
Yeah, I emailed it this.
So, you want to address your concern?
Okay, paragraph seven, the paragraph you just read, it says, I'll just go to the, right to the heart of it, upon an appropriate and timely request, what is appropriate and timely? It's not defined, I think we should define it, that if there is a request for an event that, whether it's a month ahead of time, or 45 days, or two weeks, I don't care, but I think it leaves it wide open to interpretation of what is appropriate timely, as far as a request being made.
I think 30 days would be appropriate.
It's fine. The other thing, I, I hate to use the same word twice, but it says reasonable access, and usually, the phrase I like to see in there is, which will not be unreasonably withheld. It's the same thing that we have for, for matters pertaining to, to Park and Rec. The other thing, concern I have is both the fire clause, let me see, Article 12, destruction, and Article 15, the fire clause, because I read this, if something burns down, we have to fix it at our cost, and initially, Park and Rec is funded at cost for all this, why do we assume that burden if there happens to be a fire or tornado or something like that? I would also assume that Park and Rec would have ample insurance to cover damage to property, so it could end up, they would have the funds from the insurance policy, and the city has to bear the cost of replacing or repairing something. I think we should flip-flop it there and say that the lessie shall bear the cost of repairs. That's how we started with them paying the cost of these items, and it should continue.
You pay the cost of the repairs now, if something happens, if there's, if there's vandalism and damage to, like, First Ward, you guys pay the cost of that, right?
Correct, and one thing that I would like in there is, is if there is a special event that the firemen are doing with the city, we shouldn't be on the hook if something actually happens at their event.
I agree.
Yeah.
But, but I think, if you look at that paragraph, we just flip-flop the roles, instead of there is damage.
I can't, the sun's shining my eyes, and I can't breathe. Thank you.
Sorry. How's it going? Zach, do you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, good.
Yeah, what sometimes what we do in these provisions is, is we have, you know, in the event of damage or destruction of the property, the insurance policy held by the lessie shall be used to satisfy, you know, any replacement costs to the extent that they're exceeded, you know, then we can get into that language.
It's fine with me, just something that would indicate that the cost would be borne by Park and Rec.
Unless it was another event that caused the damage.
Well, what'll happen is that, this lease agreement will provide that Park and Rec's insurance is responsible for the damage, but anytime that Park and Rec allows someone else to use their facilities, Parks and Rec should have an agreement with that entity saying, you know, that.
That indemnifies.
Positional insured, indemnification.
Yeah, that the, you know, the fire department is going to provide the insurance for that event, and list Park and Rec as an additional insured. You know, that's up to Park and Rec to do, but that, that wouldn't be something that would be in this lease between us two, that would be with Park and Rec and whatever third party's using it.
Makes sense to you, too, Frank?
Yes.
Um, paragraph.
Hold on, hold still, he has a problem.
Back to the insurance part right there, now, we have the fair down here, or even when we do the light-up night down here, that, let's see, uh, how am I going to say this?
If it's the fire department or light-up night, the cities, the cities, it would be the city anyways, right? I think you're talking about if there's enough.
Well, I don't know if the fire department's.
I mean, our insurance, our insurance policy is our insurance policy, I mean, it.
Right, so, for instance, just using this.
Knock on wood for saying, we've never ever had to use it, I mean, you know, and I'm not quite sure what would happen if something bad happened.
Well, for instance, in Latrobe, or not in Latrobe, in Irwin, there's an event in the summer that's thrown on by the Irwin Business Professionals Association, where they, where we closed down Main Street, and they're allowed to have a festival, and they sell beer and things of that nature, and we let them do that, but they have to get out a one-day insurance policy for the event, and, or one week, whatever it is, and they list the borough as an additional insured. So, that's what the, you know, the fire department needs to do that, that would, you know, it's a very short-term, limited policy just for an event.
Do you have, do you have, for the fair, do you have an insurance for the fair? Or is there a rider on the policy, or?
There's, there's an agreement with the rag company, and that they've got so much, and we got so much of an insurance policy, that's just a natural agreement on the contract.
Okay.
We transfer our liquor license for the six days over there, and that covers that liquor liability law, am I not correct, Jimmy? Right, and that covers us there, right?
Yeah, I think.
You've written, but as far as property damage and everything, I, you know, I've been doing this thing for 18 years, and I've never provided Park and Rec with a copy of insurance or anything like that, I mean, I give them a letter saying, all right, here, this is what, if there's any damage to the property, the field and all that, we go in, if there's ruts, eh, this all depends on Mother Nature, too. I mean, there's been times when we put a truckload of dirt in the ruts and stuff, and there's been times where we've had to do very little. I mean, we go through, we pick up all the trash, you know, for a three-block area and everything, and we try to make the best as we can, I mean. You got any on this, Craig?
No, I mean, you know, we're pretty lenient on how it is returned to us, because it is city-owned property.
Right.
You know, so, you know, cleaning up would definitely be an improvement area.
No, we always do that.
The way, the way it's left, because people have to realize, I know people think the ball field isn't in terrible shape, but, you know, the city used it for their light-up night, and never actually notified us that they were using it for the light-up night, and the wood, I don't know if it's still sitting there.
Well, I do think it would be, it would be Park and Rec to have some kind of an agreement. I mean, if, if, if the city's going to put, you know, if we're going to lease the property, you know, do this lease, then you guys should do the same thing.
Yeah.
Right, everything's been done informally for a very long period of time, and now we have to observe some formality, so it would be appropriate to have those formalities across the board.
Yeah, so, I recommend maybe change that to 45 days, so, make sure that, you know, insurance is covered, everybody has paperwork filled out, you know, the First Ward firemen need to get cottons liability insurance from the. they're going to have to name us also. You know, just maybe give us a couple more days to get things worked out since it's good.
Now, you guys know this is a tough, it's not an advance or a year, huh?
I know, yeah. I think I got a fair start this year, Father's Day weekend we set up.
Right.
To talk the thing about, I'm not sure if I saw in the lease that Park and Rec would name us as additional insured, because now they're going to have greater control over that property. And if there's an injury to somebody or damage to something, somebody's car, you bet your boots we're going to be adding no loss at all.
Yeah, the city will charge me than everything of us since we are part of it.
Okay, good.
The lessor shall be listed as an additional insured on all such policies. Lessor shall be provided 10 days' written notice of cancellation or termination of any policy regarding the demise premises.
One other thing, well, Article 10A, it says that the demise premises shall be occupied and used solely for the operation of the park. I think we should say subject to the provisions of paragraph seven, which allow other, subject to those provisions, it will be used as a park. We talked about insurance, talked about the repairs. Article 20, default by lessie, says if premises are deserted or vacated, and I wrote in, or becomes dilapidated or not maintained. Now, I don't think that will happen, but it could. There's got to be a provision to cancel this lease agreement if the park is not met or is not kept up to some reason, I stand. Not that you would do that, Greg, I'm not saying, but I think it's just a fair sentence to put in there. Other than that, oh, yeah, Article 24, mortgage. I'm trying to understand, do you guys do mortgages with pledging properties that you use as collateral for mortgages? I don't think so.
Nothing I'm worried of, no.
Okay. And maybe I misunderstand this paragraph, but it kind of says if you take out a mortgage and there's a default, someone else could acquire the park, not the city, or at least the leasehold interest.
You couldn't use this property as collateral if you were a-
No, some bank accepted a lease, which probably none would, but you never know. I'm just curious why we would even need that paragraph at this point.
I don't have a copy of the lease, so-
No, no, that's all right.
Tax reading.
He's checking it out.
By the way, Craig, I was informed they cleaned the baseball field off.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we forgot. If there's no intention to ever allow them to use this as collateral, then we can delete it.
Yeah, I say let's just give it up.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Article 24?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's Article 24.
Article 24, you're deleting.
I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anything else on the-
Well, I was just going to say, I already prepared the ordinance and the notice, so I can get that out tomorrow, so we're on pace to get it advertised on time for the day.
All right, next one, hit parade, is conference travel expenses. Just so council's aware, it's within the budget, we have money to cover the hospital or the hospital.
I hope they're not going to the hospital.
The hotel stay for the trip to Harrisburg.
I had mentioned to, I emailed Mike and Christine that I talked to Wayne about that. I just wanted to let all the council know.
Yeah, it's within the budget, it's fine.
It's just going to be, if people choose, if people, no, if people choose to go, if people choose to go the night before, we have to be there at 10:30, so, to get through security and everything, and that's just a long day.
All I need is an invoice, you know, from the hotel, that's all.
So.
I'll have to check after the fact.
Next item?
Last one here is the authorized, we want to go out and advertise for bids for the following items. New roof replacement, we're going to do it compartmentally on the roof, replacement of the air conditioning and heating system, and repair or replacement of the compactor. We want to get bids just to see where we are as far as prices goes. I'm sure the heating and air conditioning's been quartered, but the roof, we're going to do it compartmentally so that, there's not all the roofs needs replaced, but we have a significant leak in the front that leaks every time it rains, so.
Is that your priority, out of the three?
You know what, it's going to be, the roof has to be the priority, but unfortunately, the heating and air conditioning is so old. When Matt and Alex did a survey back five, six years ago now, they've recommended replacing it right away, so.
It's going to, I mean, it's just a matter of time before it just gives up completely, and it'll probably be like 95 degrees or five below.
Yeah, I'm more concerned by, yeah, more concerned by temperature, but those are pneumatic controls, which are air controls, and nobody uses those anymore. They haven't been, next place, I guess, I keep talking, but you'll see them in this facility. It's the only place you're going to see them, so. I'd like to get some strong bids, and then go from there and see where we are financially.
Is the roof leaking to the point that it's causing further damage?
We've had to replace tiles.
Yeah, we, every time it, every time it rains, especially in the front section, we're replacing at least 20 tile, you know, every time, I think, over, up in the main entrance coming up here, Park and Rec, down below in the hallway, and some other sections. So it is, you know, creating other damage, so, you know.
We're lucky we've got a really good bid on this roof over here, and we're hoping that we're preparing, because it was leaking, we're hoping that we get a decent bid, even if we just do the front section of the building, you know, that, it worked out really well, where it was really not that expensive compared to what it could have been. Still not cheap, but.
I think you definitely need to do this, Wayne, just for the fact is, we need to know what's coming up.
Yeah, and I think it's a, it would be nice to at least have an idea of what, the compactor, you know, is not the highest on the priority because it's still working very well, but if the compactor goes down, transfer station's down.
Yeah.
And we'd like to be able to, I mean, we're going to be able to, we'd like to be able to set up as a spare compactor and actually have two, but I know Mike's losing what hair he has on that one, because it's asking DEP to do it, it's tough.
Right, right, yeah, it's a complicated process.
Are you expanding your hours again for the summer?
You know what, we're looking into the possibility of not on Saturdays, but expanding it like Tuesday and Thursday throughout the week, and staying up until 5:00. Now, we'll still be open on Saturdays, our regular time, but I did a survey last year, and a lot of the customers, you know, they would like to come during the week, but we close at 3:00, they can't get there.
Oh, okay.
So if we stay open until 5:00 on at least two days a week, like a Tuesday and Thursday, it will alleviate a lot of the congestion we have on Saturdays, and it would help a lot of people that work during the day get there and get it done during the work week. So, you know, it's a process I'm going through, and I'm almost complete with DEP. Once I get that, we just got to figure out the schedule and how I'm going to work with the employees, you know, and everything.
Yeah, the Saturday hours didn't work as well as we thought they would.
No, the Saturday, you know, I think after 11:30, we average maybe anywhere between 3 and 10 people, so.
Well, you know, people are going to do that. They're going to get up early Saturday morning and get that done, usually.
Well, we're just trying to offer a little more.
Yeah, but I think it was a good idea. I know, I took advantage of it, but I like the, I like the Tuesday, Thursdays. Do you guys have anything to, chief, or Mike, anything?
No, we made it through another snowstorm.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's the last one. You know, nothing major reported on that, so everything got cleared, temperature helped out, warmed up a little bit, so it helped to melt the process.
How's the bridge going?
With the traffic, trucks.
We have someone there-
I've seen them up there, yeah.
... they, when, there's not a way to do them when we're not there.
Right.
They still come the wrong way, even though it's signed properly.
You are stopping a lot of trucks, though? Do you know the average of how many trucks you guys are stopping?
We narrow the hours from 6:00 in the morning until, I want to say 9:00 at night. Do you remember what that was, Wayne?
I can remember it sitting around, but.
Yeah, because we were monitoring how many, and we tried to concentrate it where the most trucks were coming through, the time of day when the most trucks were coming through.
Well, that's a good time because you're protecting the workers.
That's, that's the main thing, the day one, the workers to be protected there. So when they're working, we're making sure we're stopping all the trucks. Has there been any further information on the time of completion, or is it still what they said earlier?
June, I think.
They better not be saying June, because they told us Memorial Day, and I have a printout from the newspaper, that I would gladly enlarge and stick it over there. They keep saying June, we told you June.
I've been going to the project control meetings, and usually every other week, and so, we have one this week, and so usually, you know, everything's on schedule. They've been very fortunate for the weather, and a lot of their employees are working six days a week, and so they really haven't, they've been working during the snow, everything, the cold temperatures, so I think they're on track, and they're making good progress. They are.
Any chance for electronic pickup?
Yes.
It was just in the paper today.
Yeah, I, well, that's good. That, I think she advertised it for me and everything. It's going to be May, oh, I don't have the, I think it was May 19th, and that's going to be from 8:00 AM until noon, 12:00 PM.
May what, 19th?
Yeah, May 19th. That's going to be down at the Lake Grove Stadium parking lot. So, yeah, that just got approved about a week and a half ago, so. Now, she's opening back up, DEP granted her permit back in her facility, so.
She's back in the old place?
Yes.
I didn't read the article, I just saw the headline when I was-
Yeah, she's also open to the public for, right now, to collect TVs also, so, you know, I got that email, so everything's-
Mike, what, what did you read about collecting at the roadway? I kind of, something about collecting at the roadway. I read the article, but it didn't make sense.
Collecting at the road.
Drop off at the roadway, because they want to use, apparently, the road that goes by their building, and that area, they want to use that to store more things.
Oh.
I don't know where it's-
They don't have drive-through anymore because they've got a room, so they have to park by the roadway to get, unload the stuff, they can't drive into the building.
That'd be Smith Drive, I'm gathering, or?
I think, I think- Whatever the road is that gets past there.
I'm not going to carry a TV.
Yeah, you know what, I don't think that is, I think-
They unload it.
Yeah, they unload it for you.
Yeah, they unload it for you.
Yeah, it's not where you're going to have to carry it, you know, 100 feet. They're unloaded for you, you just drive up, they have the workers there to unload the parts.
Trying to get a feeling, they'll use a front loader or something, pick them up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm assuming, because I do know that they have forklifts out there and everything, so, yeah, they probably have some way, you know.
So what happened at your meeting with Exella? Anything exciting?
At the hospital, we talked to them about the parking, and they have a lot that they are allowing, they take a shuttle. They're trying to encourage the employees to park at the lot and shuttle them off. They are going to go around and talk to the individual homes in person, the San Jose still around, to talk to them and explain to them what's going on, that, you know, there is going to be a time period where it's going to be very tight parking, but they are trying to encourage the employees. They're saying to some degree, some of the people that she was complaining about parking are people coming in, are patients. If it's an employee, they can double out and they'll yell at the employee and ask the employee to move, but if it's a patient, there's not that much they can do. But they said they would talk to the neighbors and try to let them know the timeframe of the garage coming down, because they've got a garage coming down, so it creates dust. So they want them to know about the dust and everything else, so. I think they're trying to be good neighbors, it's just that some people may not be happy.
The woman that was here told me that she wondered if it was students, because she said a lot of these kids are getting out and they've got backpacks and things like that, so, you know, I don't know. Also, you guys, I don't know if you saw your email today, we all got an invitation to, Exella's having a luncheon on Thursday, and we're all invited at noon to just kind of talk about what their vision is.
Yeah, they were, we talked about the hospital, and they were very upbeat about the fact that they plan on using the hospital to its capacity, they're just changing, in other words, if you're going to get an operation, you're going to get in the hospital, but if you're going to get testing, some testing may be down at the new center. You know, it's kind of what the test starts, so they're, they're changing their model a little bit. And I was, by the way, I was contacted by Highmark, and after, they want to use one of our lots.
Did they call you directly?
Yeah.
Because they called me a while back.
Yeah, they want to use one of the lots to set up a mobile unit.
Yeah.
And I, you know, that's up to council, I-
Well, they had called me a while back about that, and I, the problem with that is, the people they're bringing in are Alligator General, and it's a, it's a, the way they, the way they explained it to me was, it's a mobile unit to try to attract senior citizens to wellness visits that typically don't go to the doctors that often. But, so, I reached out to Exella to see what they knew about it, because Exella deals with Highmark, and, because I, you know, I mean, I don't want to get in the middle of that.
Right.
You know, Exella's good for the community, it's good, you know, the hospital, employs a lot of people, there's, you know, it's, it's just, I don't really want to encourage that kind of competition.
Well, they're supposed to be sending me some information, I figured it forward.
But Exella, but Exella said they would be willing to work with Highmark and do the same thing, but using Exella folks, and they were going to talk to them, but apparently, that's probably not what Highmark wants to do, because Highmark owns AGH, Alligator Health Network, so.
Well, they're going to send you down.
I was going to say, I have to disagree on one thing. I don't think it's within our purview to encourage or discourage competition, that's for the marketplace.
I don't disagree with you, Jim, I just, I mean, you know, I just-
They're going to send me some information, I'm going to forward it to council. It really is up to council, I don't mean, and if you think that UPMC's interested in working with them, I can certainly reach over to them to-
You mean Exella?
Exella, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, you know, when I talked to Jen Mealy, that's what she had said. She said, well, I gave her the guy's name from Highmark. She said we would be willing to work with them too, but, you know.
Maybe it's a matter of setting-
I mean, if their mobile unit is good for our citizens, then why isn't Exella doing it? That's the first one. If it's not good, then we shouldn't allow it to be there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we wouldn't, we won't know that until we try it.
Well, I think, like I said, if it's a matter of sitting down and meeting with Highmark and with Exella, maybe that's what we need to do. Have them get together and decide what they want to do.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, I mean, you know, if there's really a need for that, you know, if they get, if they would really get, you know, that much, well, traffic. The other thing is, I lost my train of thought.
Can we look at it from the other perspective, though? If Alligator General comes here and they find the need, and they've got docks that went off of space here because of the place, you know, we've got open space, so we don't want to shut off business.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised, maybe sometime we might not see people from Indiana Regional coming down here and opening something up. So I agree with Christine, the more competition, the better for our citizens.
Like I said, once they send me the information, I'll forward it to council, and if it looks like it's better to have a meeting with Exella and with Highmark, it's fine to, you know, see if they can work it out. I would be hesitant to get in the middle.
Yeah, I don't want to get in the middle, so I don't want to get in the middle.
But I agree with you, it's not my competition. But, yeah, that was, it was a good meeting in the hospital.
I just hate, I hate, yeah, I hate to lose our hospital, and I mean, I'd really hate to lose our hospital, because I really, you know, if, you know, our residents always have to go to Greensburg for everything, or to Pittsburgh for everything, I don't think that would be really, not in anyone's best interest, but.
They talked about, you know, they remember, you know, initially it was a teaching hospital years ago.
They're going back to that, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, they said that they were going to go back to that to some degree, you know, a teaching-style hospital, so, I mean, you know, they're trying to make their model work with what the business world is now, so they're trying things.
I, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity or the need, but I've, I had my mammogram over at the new Exella Square, and it was amazing. I was impressed, I was in and out of there, literally, in 25 minutes. It was, it was really amazing, so.
I was talking with a physician about a month ago about our hospital, and he said pretty much, follow the money as long as the hospital will be profitable in some fashion.
Sure.
And what he did tell me, apparently, there are not enough operating rooms in Greensburg for their physicians to perform their operation stuff, they're trying to encourage- for their physicians to perform their operations, so they're trying to encourage them who are here to use our operating rooms at our hospital, which is a good thing.
The other thing I, I was told was that they've hired in the last couple of years somewhere between 100 and or more doctors. I mean, there's a lot of young, new doctors at Exella and I think that's really a good thing too, so.
The only issue might be that, and I'm not sure if they really want to say too much about it, but the, the quick draw is the question whether they're going to continue that or not.
In, in downtown, I know.
At this point in time, they, they see a need, but they said they're going to review that and determine whether or not.
It's very heavily traveled.
Yeah, it probably traveled in the morning, I guess the afternoon is, I don't know, it's.
It hurts.
1100.
Yeah.
I heard that too.
Well, not 1100, right.
Oh, right now, oh, yeah. I, I don't know, I've heard all kinds of stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they've made a fine decision with their entity under.
I wonder if there was a way to try to find out perhaps from Exella, how many physicians have moved from the downtown out there? And the reason I say that, how many offices are now vacant, what could we do as a community to try to spread the word to other providers like Indiana Regional, hey, we've got office space here?
Well, that's one of the things I told Jen when I, when I talked to her was that, you know, there's a part of me that, to your point, Jim, that wants to bring anybody in that wants to come in because I feel like we were kind of abandoned, but I'm actually having lunch with Bob Rogowski and Jen Mealy on the 3rd of April, kind of talk about, you know, some of that stuff as to what, you know, what, what we can do or what they can do to help us, so we'll see. But, yeah, I, I mean, I know like my, my PCP, one out of three of them moved up there. The other, I got a Weldon family practice, so two of the doctors are there, one of them moved up there.
It's not only a space issue, but it's also how much are we using in taxes, how have we moved up?
Right, right.
So I think if there's somebody at Exella that could just say, oh, yeah, I know exactly how many moved out and how many staff members they took, that might answer two, you know.
Because the Trauma Building, the old Trauma Building, has that, do we know if that's completely empty or what's going on in there?
I don't know, the last time I talked to Chad, they were, they were looking to rent it, but.
Yeah.
I don't think he had much on his way to nipples right now.
I heard it was, I heard there was only one or two, I had heard at one point there was only one or two Swedes left that was in there.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
We'll have to find out.
Jeff Maloney, Dr. Jeff Maloney, he's moving out, you know that.
He's moving out.
Dr. Sal will stay, yeah, he's moving out, Dr. Sal will stay, Dr. Bersh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they're staying, I heard.
And the downstairs floor is vacant, which is, I believe, Dr. White was.
Yeah.
So that's vacant, but that was not necessarily because of the move out.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, Dr. Silancy and that, that group, the other, the other doctor, the other piece of that building, you know, the courtyard, they've approached us with, they would like to upgrade the court, or improve the courtyard. Unfortunately, the price they came in at was extremely high, so we may sit down and talk to them about just doing a handicap ramp because there's no, on the one side there's no handicap ramping to get in there, so it would at least be advantageous to the lower level buildings, apartment.
Well, they stayed in use those offices, that's, whatever we can do to help them.
Yeah, they, they've approached us and the problem is that they, they came in, they wanted to do the whole courtyard, courtyard and it was way too much.
Did you, do we do it in stages?
We, I think the biggest first stage is to look at getting an idea for the ramping and then we'll see. A lot of this stuff is cosmetic and it's not that critical right now.
Did we ever find out why there was the power, we lost power all over the place?
No, no, you know, I heard possible substation issue, but nothing was confirmed on that.
Because it was like spotty too, like.
Yeah.
I know downtown, because I was talking to one of those chiropractors down here and she lost power from about 10 till about 11:30 and then I guess somebody said over by, over north side by Choice and stuff, they lost power. But I had, I didn't lose power at my house.
No, it was.
Nothing was flashing, so I don't know. Did you lose power?
Yeah, Denny Pastry was out and then Alexander, the traffic lights were out.
I think McDonald's over there, I think Shop and Save and all them, I think they were out.
Oh, really?
I think.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is I got a call today from a gentleman from Senator Bob Casey's office, they're having a Westmoreland County Mayor's Forum next Monday at Westmoreland Community Action and Roundtable, so I got invited to go to that, so I'm going to go and see what's, what, what that's all about. So if anybody has anything they want to tell Senator Casey, let me know. Anybody else have anything? All right, guys, yeah, on the night, have a happy Easter.